Good afternoon. I'm Jessica Robinson, Chair of the Planning Commission. I hereby call this June 18, 2025, meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of the April 17, 2025, meeting minutes. Any changes or discussion about the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the April 17 minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the April 17, 2025, meeting minutes as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Kessinger?
Obstain.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we now turn to new business on our agenda. Several of the items on our new business agenda this evening are public hearings. After the staff report is given and the commission has the opportunity to ask questions of staff, the public hearing will be opened. We'll first give the applicant the opportunity to make any comments about their request, and then we'll open up the floor for comments from the public and then from Zoom. All speakers should come to the podium up here at the front and first provide us with your name and address. And we ask that the applicant limit their comments to 10 minutes and that all other speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The first item is item 3A, "Public Hearing in Consideration of a Request by Nathaniel R. Bradley, Warren D. Bradley, and Amy E. Shelley to vacate, discontinue, and abandon that portion of undeveloped Peach Street lying within the bounds of 445 Peach Street", which is Lot 3, parcel identification number 9629, 444 Peach Street", which is Lot 4, parcel identification number 9633, and 125A Greenwood Road, Lot 5, parcel identification number 9620, all of the Hidden Glen Platte. And further, that portion of undeveloped Pinehurst Road lying within the bounds of 445 Peach Street, again, Lot 3, parcel identification number 9629, and 125A Greenwood Road", which is Lot 5, parcel identification number 9620, both of the Hidden Glen Platte. Before we continue on this item, I need to disclose that I have a conflict and will recuse myself from participating in this item, and this portion of the meeting will be run by the vice chair.
Pass the memo again, please. Thank you. Yes, I'm Judith Wiegand, the vice chair, and we will have, this is a rather unusual item. We will have two public hearings, one right after the other, one for the vacation of the stretch of Peach Street and the other for the other street, I'm sorry, Pinehurst Road. We will begin with a staff report, as we usually do, which will cover both of the vacations and then it will, and then we will have questions from, if any, from the commission to the staff, and then I will open the first public hearing. So, Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The applicants are seeking to vacate two undeveloped streets in the 400 block of Peach Street. This property was initially platted in Augusta County and was annexed into the city, I think with the last annexation, in 1986. It was replatted in 2003, and it, we believe that that replating, then, one of the intentions of that was to vacate these undeveloped portions of these two streets. However, there is no evidence that ordinances of vacation were ever adopted or recorded by the city. The applicants own the property of 445 Peach Street, which they are now in the process of selling, and they need to clear, clear up the property and these, you know, undeveloped streets in order to sell the property. Staff has reviewed the request and has not identified any issues. This property has already been replatted and developed, and these portions of the undeveloped streets will never be developed for public use, and vacating these two sections will not have any impact on existing alleys or other undeveloped streets in the area. Staff did note that there's a 50-foot utility, public utility easement in the undeveloped Peach Street section that was never dedicated to the city with a deed of easement, and staff has requested that the applicant draft the necessary deed and record it at the same time as the ordinance of vacation. And staff recommends that as a condition of approving the vacating of the undeveloped portion of Peach Street. I'd be glad to take any questions you have now or after you conduct the two public hearings.
Commissioners have any questions for staff or our council liaison?
Madam Vice Chair, I do have one question for staff. Just to clarify, it appears that both the existing driveways are generally in the area to be vacated.
I have not seen the property firsthand. It is my understanding that, you know, these properties were developed without any kind of reference to these undeveloped streets and do not meet any kind of setbacks if there was a setback from these undeveloped streets. I believe that the applicant is here. When he is given an opportunity to speak, he can answer that.
Thank you.
There any other questions? Okay, then I will now open the public hearing regarding the request to vacate Peach Street, including the issue about the easement. To discontinue and abandon the aforementioned portions of undeveloped Peach Street, I ask that all speakers come forward and begin by stating your name and address, and then give us your comments. Would the applicant like to come forward? The public hearing is open.
I'm Nathaniel Bradley, the applicant on here. I reside at 587 Hilltop, but we own the property at 445 Peach Street. But to your question, yes, it is a joint driveway for 444 Peach Street and 445, and it branches off as a Y.
Thank you.
Do you have any, anything you'd like to share with us?
We know about the Peach Street easement, the one from Pinehurst. It would, I mean, it's, Pinehurst was made another road on the other side of the backside of the hill. So, it's never been, you know, developed at all. So, it would have to be like a half a mile, you know, extension to even get to this portion where it resides behind our house. And it's on a hill. It would, and the right of way would actually go into our carport. So, it's kind of hard to build a road there. You would have to really take out our house to build a road there, so. And then the one going up Peach Street, it goes to nothing. I mean, it's up in hill. There's no roads, you know, up if you continue over the hill. So, it's kind of just de facto her property, but nothing else is useful there.
Before I thank you and ask you, and you can be seated, do any of the commissioners have questions for you, for Mr. Bradley? Hearing none? Thank you. We'll call you back when we get to the other motion. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the commission.
I guess I do want to say one thing real quick.
Sure.
And only because Tim's not here, he probably would have put that in the report. We did get two letters
Yes.
previously in support of, in support of these, of these vacations. And I only bring it up to make sure that it's in the minutes that we did get those two other positive letters for vacation, so.
And none that were in opposition to?
Yes, ma'am. Aside from that, if you'd entertain a motion?
Yes, please.
Great. On the basis that the request would serve the interest of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, I move the planning commission recommend approval of the application to vacate that portion of undeveloped Peach Street lying within the bounds of 445 Peach Street, Lot 3, PID number 9629, 444 Peach Street, Lot 4, PID number 9633, and 125A Greenwood Road, Lot 5, PID number 9620, of the Hidden Glen Platte with the following condition: The request shall not be placed on a city council agenda until after a deed of dedication for the public utility easement has been drafted by the applicant and reviewed by city staff.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this vacation. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Kessinger?
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We turn now to the second public hearing for the undeveloped portion of Pinehurst Road. I'm going to open the public hearing. And if the applicant would like to come back to the microphone, you may, to the lectern.
Nathaniel Bradley. So Pinehurst is the one that goes behind my mom's house, and that's the one that's in the easement with our carport. So, it would be very hard to build.
I understand. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Bradley? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter?
Madam Vice Chair, we have a hand raised on Zoom.
Okay. Would our Zoom caller please identify yourself with name and address, and then give us your comments?
This is John Hutchison. I think y'all didn't know I was on the, on the Zoom. I talked to Tim today, but Tim's not there. I'm here.
Okay.
Mr. Hutchinson, I will make you a panelist.
Thank you. Now my dog thinks somebody's here.
Okay. If there is anyone who has any comments to make before I close the public hearing, seeing that there's no one coming to the lectern, the public hearing on this matter is closed, and the matter rests with the commission.
And as a, as a point of clarification, there were no conditions that were needed with this, with this second vacation because there were no public easements identified on those parcels, right?
Yes.
Oh, then I would make a motion on the basis that the request would serve the interest of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice. I move the planning commission recommend approval of the application to vacate that portion of undeveloped Pinehurst Road lying within the bounds of 445 Peach Street, Lot 3, PID number 9629, and 125A Greenwood Road, Lot 5, PID number 9620, of the Hidden Glen Platte.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recommend approval of this vacation to the city council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Kessinger?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then what? What about Mr. Hutchinson? I vote aye too.
We would need a motion.
Oh, before we have, we need to have a motion here. Where can we put that? Would you please?
And this is Jessica Robinson, Chair of the Commission. Mr. Hutchinson, the, one of the members of the commission has made a request to participate in tonight's June 18, 2025, meeting remotely through Zoom. Is there a motion from anyone to allow that?
Yes. I move that we allow Mr. Hutchinson to participate by Zoom in this meeting.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to allow remote participation. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Kessinger?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
As a voting.
Sorry, no required of motion.
And then, Mr. Hutchinson, if it's required under the bylaws of the commission, if you just please state your current physical location and the reason why you're participating remotely.
118 Madison Place, participating remotely because I have trouble getting around, as everyone has seen.
Thank you very much.
And I didn't know it was an issue. I didn't know it was a bad thing, so.
Not at all. We just have to go through the formality.
I understand. I understand.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, turning to the next item on our agenda, item 3B, "Introduction of an Amendment to Title 18, Zoning of the Stanton City Code to add Chapter 18.156, Residential Apiaries." Maggie Taylor, long-range planner for the city, will present the staff report.
Thank you. Yeah, so tonight, we're bringing forward a draft amendment to City Code 18.156 for residential apiaries. This amendment aims to permit the keeping of honeybees as an accessory use to single-family and two-family dwellings in residential and professionally-zoned property within the city. You may recall that at the September 2024 meeting, the commission considered a citizen request regarding apiaries. And while that specific request was not authorized, the commission did direct staff to explore an alternative, an amendment that would allow apiaries as an accessory use. So, since then, staff has been working on the draft. We have conducted research into how other Virginia localities regulate apiaries. We have also incorporated best management practices for keeping honeybees directly from the Virginia State Code. And most importantly, we've engaged with some of our local experts. The Shenandoah Valley Beekeepers Association did have a chance to review the draft amendment and was generally in support of its provisions. So, tonight, we ask that you review the proposed draft amendment and its key provisions, which was in your packet. And this is your opportunity to provide feedback and ask any questions before we move on to the next step. And if, after your review, the planning commission is in agreement, then staff could advertise the amendment for a public hearing at a future meeting.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Ms. Taylor?
I read the ordinance and was struck by the amount of detail that needs to go into this, and so therefore, the amount of research and calling and talking with people and everything that must have been necessary. So, I wanted to thank you all for it. Excuse me.
Any other questions or any discussion?
I'm going to ask a question, if that's okay. And I'm not even sure how to ask because I don't know how this word, how to pronounce the word. Obviously, we're, the goal is for honeybees and not other types of bees that might be considered nuisances, if you will. I'm assuming Apis mellifera is the technical term for a honeybee. Does the, may include other hymenopterous insects that depend on pollen and nectar for food? Open up this ordinance for something that we might not want that would be different than a honeybee? Mostly, I guess I don't know what, what that word is and how it would be defined.
Yes, I believe that language came from state code. And I'm trying to think how to answer your question. It should not open up to other types of?
Right, and, and I guess, I mean, as I sit here, I don't know why somebody would want to, but could somebody say, well, I can raise wasps because they depend on pollen and nectar for food? I mean, again, I can't think of a reason why, but.
No, so this, this ordinance is only for honeybees. It would not allow you to keep whatever kind of?
Okay.
I don't think wasps would be called, whatever that name was, the Apis something or other, Apis mellifera.
Right, and then I get that. That is very technical. But if we're saying, and other?
I get it, okay.
That's the, that's, I guess, where I'm a little, just want to be clear that the and other, we're not opening it too far up.
I, I can clarify that, maybe, and do a little more research into that part.
Was there, was there any thought to the delineation of, of, you know, single-family and two-family? And, and kind of where that cutoff made sense?
So, we did consider, I think originally, we had considered allowing single-family, two-family, and multifamily. We scaled it back to just single-family and two-family, thinking that there might be some complications with allowing it in the multifamily. We felt that single-family and two-family was more manageable, but I think that is open for discussion.
I mean, I, yeah, I was, you can what-if any scenario, but if there's a duplex rental that somebody has their beehive and the other neighbors don't appreciate that. But, I mean, that's kind of what the purpose of the, of the permitting and stuff like that is, is meant to go through. So, that was, that was my only thought on it.
So, I looked up the hymenopterous word, and it does say, "Any insect belonging to that order", which includes familiar creatures like ants, bees, and wasps, as well as sawflies and horn tails. So, maybe we need to take another look at that and point. Mr. Hanson, thank you. Any other comments?
Just for reference for the lot size and the number of colonies permitted, do you all recall what the request, specifics of the request from last year in terms of lot size and colonies that individual had?
I do not recall that. Our biggest issue with that is it was, the proposal was that to be the principal use of the property. There was no house on it.
Right.
So, I'm sure Mr. Hartless knows exactly how large that lot was and how many hives were on it, but I, I did not, I do not recollect that.
My memory serves, those lots weren't a quarter acre apiece, so that'd be an magnitude of 10,000 to 12,000 square feet, just sort of typical-sized lots. But yeah, again, it, the, the principal use, I think we, so we all sort of viewed that and stopped it from there and didn't think much, much beyond that, so.
And only one of those three lots had a house on it. The other two were vacant, as I'm recalling now, so. It was.
I would, then I'm going to throw this out there again, sort of thinking back to that specific thing. Is this a, again, using a very specific example that might not be the best example, if one of those lots had been, had had a dwelling on it? Like, let's say you, you resided at one lot, but maybe you did have two or three. Would we be willing to suggest that your hives could extend onto your contiguous properties? No, okay.
We, we don't do that now for accessory structures.
Okay.
If you have a house in one lot and you want to build a shed on your adjoining lot, we require that you vacate the line between the two and combine them.
Fair enough.
So, going back to the Section 2, area requirements, the number of colonies, I'm a little worried about subsection 2E, "Temporary Increase for the Purpose of Queen-Mating or Swarm Control." A little broad. It doesn't say, it just says you can temporarily increase it. It doesn't have any further limitations, and, I don't know. It seems for enforcement purposes that that... Do we think that that provision's necessary?
So, based off of what I've heard from the experts, that is a necessary provision to have in there. And after speaking with Linda, she was comfortable with the enforcement aspect of that. But that is something we could take a closer look at. Maybe get the city attorney's opinion on that specific part as well.
I, I was thinking about that as well. I mean, the, the time limit seems reasonable, but if, if you can go from two colonies to, I, I have no idea about beekeeper.
There's no limitation on the increase of?
Yeah, you go from two to 12, or, and I don't even know what that would necessarily look like. Or, I, it, yeah. I don't know what you need to do in order to propagate a queen or whatever, you know? Like, I don't know how, but it sounds like you guys already looked at it, but.
And it doesn't, it doesn't envision, at least the way it's written, that they come back to you for that temporary permission? And so, we have no, I guess, start and date?
I assume that a colony is considered one queen and everybody that's serving her.
Yes, it's defined earlier.
Okay, so I guess I, I'm, my assumption with that provision is similar to our, I'm trying to think exactly how it's worded. But like, the dog provisions, you're allowed so many dogs, but like, if they're less than so many weeks old, you can have more because of the litter situation. I'm assuming that that's similar to what's happening here, where if you're trying to make a new queen, you have to have so many to get there from here before you can spare back your colony. I'm, I'm thinking that's what the, the thought is. Just making sure that we get there is, is, is probably the important half of it. Sort of the similar thing.
I think I understand what they mean, but I'm not sure. So, I would be very helpful if we could have either someone or some reference here. Obviously, we're missing Tim right now. But if we could have this, when we, when you come back with the ordinance, the good questions, but we could understand them all, you know, where they came from. Because I suspect this is because they're all swarming, like Daniel was saying, and they need a second hive to start. And so, he may have more than one. And then at some point, when everything settles down, they'll take one hive somewhere else and sell it or give it away or whatever they, they do with it. Or maybe if they've only got one hive, they'll have two after that. And if they can put that many on their lot, that's fine. But.
Yeah, that's what I was curious. Is it typically a one-to-one colony, the hive? Or can colonies have, more typically have more hives, or?
I believe they can't have more.
Yeah.
I think John might have his hand raised.
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I wonder if we could, I'm sorry. I wonder if we could get the guy who you consulted with, Maggie, to, with the Bee, Beekeepers Association or whatever it was, if, if he could come, answer questions for the, for the commission?
Oh, we can certainly invite him.
Thank you.
Great.
That's my only thought.
Anything else?
I'm going to ask one more question, just as a clarification. I'm, being that this is residential apiaries, this, we have other provisions for, like, agricultural apiaries? Like, if somebody had enough land for, like, farming operations, that that's a whole different ordinance, yes? So, we're not restricting that in any way?
Yeah, so this is only for residentially-zoned and professionally-zoned? So, if it was, yeah.
That's what I figured, just, okay, cool.
So, there's no, it's not a public hearing. There's no official, official motion needed. But do we have a general consensus to authorize staff to schedule this matter for a public hearing at a future planning commission meeting?
Yes. Thank you so much, Maggie.
All right. Turning to item 3C, "Authorization to Initiate an Amendment to City of Stanton, to the City of Stanton's Capital Improvement Plan for Physical Year 2026 through 2030." Rodney Rhodes, Director of Community Development, will give the staff briefing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff is proposing the inclusion of a project to construct a sidewalk along North Augusta Street from approximately the intersection with Lambert to Harper Court, which is at the Terry Court Shopping Center, into the current CIP, Fiscal Year 2026 to 2030. When the CIP came before you and you conducted a public hearing on this earlier in the year, this project was actually in the CIP at that time. It subsequently was removed when we put our focus, our energy, and funding towards the Edgewood Sidewalk Project. However, we still consider this an important link, pedestrian link in the city, and we're seeking state funds, grant funds, to help pay for these improvements. And this would be beneficial if it was back in the CIP. It would rank higher in those grant applications. So, that's why we're coming before, bringing it up to you. We would need this back in the CIP before we submit our final application in September to VDOT.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rhodes or any discussion?
The section to Harper, Harper Court was Phase 1 of a two-phase project along Augusta Street. We don't want to go ahead and include the Phase 2 as well this time We don't want to go ahead and include the phase two as well this time, or just consider it later?
Uh, uh, there's no urgency on that, so I think that we have more time to think about that. And also where we would, um, how we would finance, fund um, the city's share, even if we were to get a grant. We still need to, you know, matching funds. So that's why we did not include that other section at this time. That's certain, certainly something we should consider um, in next year's CIP.
Anything else?
Would, um, if we include, and I understand the inclusion into the CIP brings it to a higher level, does adding this section back in lower a different projects? I'm gonna use the word status, like are, are we upping this, but we're gonna lower something because of that? Or is this more of an additive and not a subtractive?
I think it's, it's only adding, um, this is the state's way of prioritizing projects. Um, so if it's in the CIP, it's ranked a two, as opposed to right now, it'd be a ranked, ranked four. So, um, and, and we do have some other um, applications that we have applied for. But we consider this to be a priority in that grant.
Okay.
Or, we had to prioritize the grants um, on the city side, and we thought this was the most important of the three projects.
Okay.
I believe we are.
Um, Madam Chair, on the basis that the request would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution authorizing staff to initiate an amendment to the City of Stanton's Capital Improvement Plan fiscal year 2026 through 2030.
It has been moved and seconded, the planning commission adopt the resolution authorizing staff to initiate an amendment to the City of Stanton's Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2026 through 2030. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Kessinger?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes new business, um, and we now turn to old business. Item A is an update on the mass rezoning of existing non-conforming residential uses in area zone business and industrial in the historic districts and the south side. Maggie Taylor, long range planner for the city, will provide the staff update.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick update for you all tonight. So as you know, we held the public information meeting for the mass rezoning on June 11th at Stanton High School. There were approximately 25 residents um, that attended to learn about the process. The comments we received were mostly positive. Uh, we have received one opt-out form so far. Um, however, several other people took copies of that opt-out form and asked for time to consider their option. So we have given people until July 16th to let us know if they would like to opt out or not. Um, so they have a whole month to consider it, although I will just note that technically, they could opt out anytime before council votes on it. But we would like to at least have an idea on who is participating at that point. As a reminder, there were 90 properties originally on our list, which means we're now down to 89 properties, and we may see that number lowered just a bit. Um, so our plan is to come back to you all next month with that finalized list, and then we would like to do a public hearing in planning, uh, with planning commission in August.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I don't see any other business, so are there any actions of city council updates for us?
Uh, Madam Chair, looking through the minutes from your last meeting um, in April, uh, city council uh, approved a special use permit at uh, 224 Taylor Street to, for a school with conditions as recommended by the commission. As you recall, I believe the commission recommended um, a lower threshold for number of students that could be there. Also, city council uh, approved amendments to Chapter 18.85, H1 Historic Preservation District, as recommended by the planning commission. And also, city council amended Chapter 18.50, P1 Professional District to allow floor shops and, as a use permitted on review.
Next, we turn to item seven, which is matters from the public. Are there any one that wishes to discuss anything other than what's already been discussed at today's meeting? You want to come back up again, Mr. Bradley? Okay, anybody else on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
All right. In that case, our next planning commission meeting will be on Thursday, July 17, 2025. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everyone.
I like how excited I get when I.